The Blanco County Commissioners Court to order this Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. Ms. Waller, would you call the roll?
Judge Bray.
Here.
Commissioner Weir.
Here.
Mr. Eager.
Here.
Commissioner Leesman.
Here.
Commissioner Randle.
Here.
Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before public comments today, I took the liberty of placing an item ahead of that. It is someone pretty special in Blanco County. Mr. Watson has recently celebrated his 95th birthday and, in addition to that, has been afforded the opportunity to be on one of the, I forgot the name of it, but it's the flights to go to Washington DC to see the World War II monuments. And there's a proclamation for me to issue that I have put on here for the commissioners to consider acknowledging. And if anything deserves to be at the front and center of this agenda, it is he. And so with that, I'm going to read it for the benefit of the public. Whereas on November 2nd, 1924, Mr. Porter Watson was born in High Texas, the small town in Blanco County established by his maternal grandfather, Hyrum Brown. Mr. Watson continues to live in this community, having just celebrated his 95th birthday. Whereas Mr. Watson attended the Pleasant Hill Rocky Creek Community School through the eighth grade, the highest grade available, and whereas Mr. Watson served his country in the United States Army Infantry, June 27th, 1944, and was honorably discharged on April 19th, 1946. He served in the Pacific during World War II on three islands in the Philippines, Letay, Panay, and I've been pronouncing it Bendaneo, but I understand it's Mendania. He also served a few months after wartime in Korea. Mr. Watson will be a participant in the honored flight, Austin Number 65 Commemorative Pearl Harbor Flight, on December 6th and 7th, 2019, to Washington DC. Whereas Mr. Watson's return from serving in the US Army, he continued with his farming endeavors that he was involved in prior to his service. He grew turkeys on his farm from 1952 through 1979 and continues to raise cattle today. He married the love of his life, Judith, on July 3rd, 1947. He and Judith have been blessed with three children, Linda, Bonnie, who has passed, and Patrick, four grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren. Porter and Judith have been active with the Pleasant Hill Rocky Creek Community, serving as early bird four-age club leaders, the Rifle Club, and the Pleasant Hill Rocky Creek Community Club. Porter also served as a director for the Blanco County Farm Bureau in the early 1980s and served as treasurer for the Rocky Creek Cemetery for many years. He and Judith are active members of the Rocky Creek Church. Now therefore, I, Judge Brett Bray, Blanco County, Texas, do hereby recognize Mr. Porter Watson for his dedication and service to his country, his family, his church, and his community, and wish him a great trip to Washington DC and many more years of prosperous living. And then it says, adopted by the Blanco County Commissioners Court this 12th day of November 2019, and I ask that the Commissioners reconsider.
I make a motion to acknowledge a proclamation, recognizing and honoring Porter Watson, World War II veteran.
Is it seconded? Commissioner Weir, second. Take it that way. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Watson. I ask if Mr. Watson would like to speak, say a few words, and his children advise that's not a good idea that I would give the microphone back.
(laughter)
My God, he can't hear that.[365.12][365.12](laughter)
All right. I really would like to just keep going on because I'm so enamored of him, not only for having lived to this age, but to be a veteran. I looked up those particular islands in the Philippines and, you know, one of them has like 20 million people on it now, and another has about four or five million people on it now. I'm sure when he was there, it was entirely different and probably a pretty scary time, something that most of us, maybe all of us, have never experienced. Anyway, I just really can't say enough about him, so I'd better stop. Let's move on. We'll go to the public comments section. We have several today, beginning with Ms. Welch from the Peyton Colony Road area.
Yeah. Good morning. My name is Deanne Welch, I reside at 1685 Peyton Colony Road. The only thing I wanted to tell you this morning is that I remain disappointed that you didn't even respond to my email requesting a public hearing on the pipeline issue back in June, and now this is before you, and obviously, it's not really ready to go. But still, the public hasn't been able to address this issue, and this is not representative government, and you know that. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you doing this morning? I'm here to ask you to table the agreement with Kinder Morgan. I feel that it's not ready to go. I would hope that you guys would take some more time to consider it. There's going to be other people speaking about specifics, so that's my main reason here. I also want to remind you that the overwhelming majority of your constituency opposes the Kinder Morgan pipeline, and I would hope that you guys would help Kinder Morgan to understand the catastrophic consequences of coming through our environmentally sensitive areas and not cite anything until a full environmental impact study and economic impact study have been done. So, thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. Good morning. I'm here to speak this morning on item 19 as well. Specifically, I'd like to address the donations that Kinder Morgan has offered to the various entities in our county in exchange for the easements they would like to route their pipeline across our rivers and roads. The total agreed-to donations amounts to about $1 million, made up for the next year. No one could argue that these donations are not positive for the county. I'm especially heartened to see the $200,000 that will go to our new community resource center and $34,000 that will go to the Blanco ISD Foundation. This is a good start, but it doesn't go nearly far enough. These easements are perpetual; they will be in place forever, however long that is. Kinder Morgan is serious about investing in our community; their investment should also be perpetual. The projected profit from this pipeline to Kinder Morgan is about $10 million a day. So their investment in our community amounts to one-tenth of one day's profit for them, hardly a generous investment. The pipeline is not only slated to carry natural gas, it's a direct pipeline into the pockets of Kinder Morgan founder, Mr. Richard Kinder, who is a well-known philanthropist in his hometown of Houston. Quick Google search of the Kinder Foundation, which is the founder, reveals that the foundation gets lean heavily toward creating and protecting green spaces in and around Houston. But what about our green spaces? Where is the investment in the parks, which could be devastated in the event of an accident on this route? Our two state parks, Blanco State Park and Purnales Falls State Park, are not worthy of protection or investment? The Kinder Foundation has invested close to a half a billion dollars in the parks around Houston, but the company, the Fundstep Foundation, has offered nothing to the citizens of our county to protect our beautiful green spaces. The other area that Kinder Morgan has, the Kinder Foundation has been very generous in is the area of education. Again, close to half a billion dollars to various educational initiatives in the Houston area, many of which modestly carry the Kinder name, and yet our school district has offered $34,000, a one-time donation. Let me repeat, $10 million a day for as long as the pipeline is operational, forever. Suddenly, that million-dollar donation, one-tenth of one day's profit, looks pretty paltry in a larger context. Just like has been shown in the condemnation hearings, they think they're in Hooterville; they think they can offer us chicken feed and expect us to be grateful. Kinder Morgan's investment in our community should be ongoing, just the way their profits will be. Kinder Morgan can do better by us, and the county can do better by us. Please postpone these easement agreements until their investment is equal to the risks that our community is absorbing in this dangerous route they have chosen. Thank you.
I'm also here to see Tom, item 19, ask you to consider some thoughts and questions I have regarding opposed to pipeline hearing. In easement agreement term four, grantee agrees not to transport any material through the pipeline under the natural gas. What keeps a future pipeline viable from transporting something else? Because in term 19, it basically reads that no one can transfer its interest, rights, duties, or obligations without consent except the grantee. The next relevant phrase reads, "Any purchasing entity agrees to be on the terms and conditions." This period of rather makes the pipeline carry only material. Please make it crystal clear that future buyer will be held to contract. In term 22, the oddest term I've ever seen in a contract, time is of the essence. Time is not of the essence for Blanco County. Y'all need to take your time and take a good look and see, clean up the language, and take all the time you need to review the contract. That just helps you that they're in order. In the application for installation, what are HP's best management practices? They cite control of erosion and sedimentation. That needs to be spelled. In the investment agreement, are those payments donations? Why does there need to be an agreement? Why not ask for perpetuating payments? Also, it reads, "County shall encourage all donor beneficiaries to publicly acknowledge Kinder Morgan's contributions and the benefits to Blanco County community." I'm sure they will acknowledge their donations, but it just sounds kind of tactic to me. So anyway, a few thoughts I have on that. I urge you to take your time and make sure that what you agree to has the cleanest language to uphold both parts of the contract and to benefit your citizens here in Blanco County. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Casperis.
Good morning. I'm on a comment on what appear to be missed opportunities to protect the well-being of Blanco County citizens. Kinder Morgan issued a document titled Permian Highway Pipeline Project Frequently Asked Questions. A quote from that document says, "Kinder Morgan developed a proposed pipeline route that is located in an operationally feasible route that minimizes the pipeline's impact on the environment. KM's engineers and environmental specialists developed this route after close examination of publicly available information as well as aerial, environmental, cultural, and civil survey data. The document also states, "KM is committed to protecting significant cultural sites and environmentally sensitive areas. This commitment extends to all aspects of the project." Unquote. Have our county officials call on Kinder Morgan to live up to these statements during negotiations and agreement. The citizens of Blanco County have every right to review the results of KM's examination. Earlier this year, a group of landowners asked Judge Bray to assist us in requesting the related assessments or studies performed by Kinder Morgan. Judge Bray did so, but neither he nor landowners have received any response to this request. Therefore, we are left to wonder if the county used the opportunity in these negotiations to repeat that request of KM. If the county has viewed these materials, will they be released to the public? If not, will KM release the results of their examinations now? The fact is, the geology of the hill country is complex and increases risks of environmental damage. Construction on an extension of MOPAT in Austin has recently been halted due to the discovery of 72 cars features along the route. TechDOT is having to redesign its bridge crossing and is working with TC-EQ and the Barton Springs Edwards Octo for Conservation District to find a solution. What assurances do we have that KM would exercise such caution when they find sensitive environmental areas in Blanco County? The county has had other opportunities to protect our county. Did the county use their leverage during negotiations and ask KM to agree that no compression station would be located in Blanco County? Did the county use their leverage to specify conditions related to temporary housing facilities? Perhaps the county did address these issues, but they were rejected as part of the negotiations. In that case, the public has a right to know that the county at least made an attempt to protect our best interests and what benefits we've received from exclusion of these protections. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, the Blanco County Commissioners are going against your constituents and because all the surrounding areas, organizations have passed resolutions opposing the Permian Highway Pipeline. Okay, so I was told that the reason why you didn't want to go along and pass a resolution against it is because you wanted the opportunity to negotiate. And I'm here to make a statement that it seems like the negotiations were not done very well because as Ms. Devine talked about, only one-tenth of what they get per day is Blanco County getting overall. I want to talk about why we think this is not a good negotiation, because you have to consider Kinder Morgan's history. The pipeline has, they've been cited for many, many failures by the Pipeline and Hazness Materials Safety Administration, just to name a few. The pipeline was too close to a high consequence area, like a pool or hospital, failure to maintain maps showing pipeline locations, failure to test pipeline safety devices, failure to maintain proper firefighting equipment, failure to inspect the pipeline as required, failure to adequately monitor pipes' erosion levels, failure to have the follow written startup and shutdown procedures, failure to have or use other measures to detect abnormal operating conditions. And when you look at the accident record, just between 2017 and 2019, of 36 accidents in, no, these are just gas-related accidents, of 36, 17 were gas-related, five resulting in deaths, two resulting in injuries. In 2018, 24 gas-related incidences, 16, I mean, 16 of 24, and two resulting in deaths and 21 injuries. In 2019, eight of the 17 accidents recorded were gas-related and two resulting in deaths and five injuries. And when you look at why these things happened, it's because of these failures to comply, it looks like, because explosions and burns are very high, the number of those that have occurred, and why those have resulted in deaths. Installing, replacing, drilling, installing water lines, and they hit a gas line. They find weak points in the pipeline or moving a gas line. Ruptures, overpressure, and when you think about it, I think the pressure of this is two billion cubic feet per, I can't even say it, but anyway, it's very high pressure, and due to leaks. So, I want to submit this information to you to go on record, that these are reasons why a million, a million dollars for Blanco County is just not near enough. The risks are way too high, and I ask that you postpone the vote and consider these things.
Mr. Watson, I have your written comments as well that I'm giving to the county clerk.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, my name is John Watson. Good morning, Judge Bray, Commissioners. I want to speak about Agenda Item Number 19, the proposed, the three proposed agreements between Kinder Morgan regarding the Permian Highway Pipeline and the county roadways. The Agenda Item has first appeared on county website around 4:00 PM on Friday, item number 8. The documents and associated exhibits total more than 100 pages. Interested stakeholders and residents have not had sufficient time to read, digest, and think about the adequacy of the proposed agreements, nor has there been time to consult with outside independent experts such as engineers and lawyers regarding these agreements, all of which have important, long-term consequences for the county. For example, the easements granted would be perpetual. Many questions arrived at us from an initial reading of the documents and exhibits. Given sufficient time, it seems possible that some of those questions could be explored with the officials of Blanco County who were involved in the negotiations with Kinder Just to take two examples, on page one of the pipeline easement agreement, under the heading "Easement Purpose," it is stated that, quote, "shall not be operated under pressure exceeding maximum allowable operating pressure," close quote. Now, pressure is important because the higher the pressure, the greater the potential for damage should rupture or an explosion occur. Yet, that term, maximum allowable operating pressure, is not defined in that agreement. It should be. Secondly, there is no provision for requiring Kinder Morgan to do any geological or other testing at the proposed crossings of the highways and roads to determine the suitability for tunneling under those roads. I request the Commissioners' Court to defer any action on those agreements at the meeting today in order to give time to citizens to study and assess the proposed agreements. There's no known urgency to agreeing to those agreements today. Kinder Morgan has yet to receive her required permits from the Corps of Engineers or Fish and Wildlife Service. A pause to afford time for reflection and study by Blanco County residents is both reasonable and practical, and it could result in possible improvements to these agreements. There's been total and utter stonewalling of giving information to stakeholders in this county and all over the hill country by Kinder Morgan and by this county. I have a pending proposal or request for open records, and it is being stonewalled by your county attorney. Please listen to your citizens.
I'm Ken Welch, 1685 Peyton Colony Road. I've prepared written comments regarding the three agreements under consideration today. I received my Arkansas Professional Engineering License in 1979. I served as chief engineer for Union Pacific Railroad from 1990 to 1992. I then served as vice president of environmental management for Union Pacific Railroad from 1992 to 2000. I am very familiar with construction practices and was responsible for all environmental compliance and had mysterious response for eight years for all 23 states of Union Pacific Railroad. I will center my verbal comments on four areas, but ask that you review my written comments, which contain more specific issues to be considered. Throughout these proposed agreements, mention is made of reporting of spills, releases, contamination, and so forth. The notifications noted meet federal notification standards, which are used for administrative support and follow-up response. These notifications are wholly inactive for first responders. Blanco County personnel will be the closest to an incident and must be equipped to provide an immediate public safety response. Blanco County Office of Emergency Management must be notified immediately in all situations. None of the road crossing permit plans in Exhibit B appear to be approved by a professional engineer. Traffic control plans are so approved. Numerous complex issues are involved in pipeline construction, including but not limited to surface and subsurface site investigations, environmental impact studies, materials engineering, and cathodic protection. I urge Blanco County to engage the services of an engineering firm with professional engineering staff qualified in these areas to perform detailed review of all Kinder Morgan plans and specifications, as well as to provide construction, site inspection services. Roadway damage as a result of truck traffic and site work may be substantial. Construction bonds to allow Blanco County to make repairs are not high enough and should be in place for a period of five years. Roads and bridges in Blanco County are severely underfunded. Take this opportunity to require Kinder Morgan to help fund bridges in Blanco County for the long term. Their pipeline will impact Blanco County for generations. Please review my detailed comments and include them in the minutes and public record.
So that takes us to Agenda Item Number Five, considering approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Officer.
Mr. Weir, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? The estimated payroll.
Sir, I'll make a motion to approve the estimated November 2019 payroll in the amount of $309,247.36.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner, is that you?
That's me.
Okay. Commissioner Eager, seconds, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that takes us to the official reports. All of the official reports are in, including the one that was missing from last month, so we have to catch it.
Make a motion to approve the official report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any seconds? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, line item transfers. Who do we have? Oh, this is the issue of, we've had a lot of demand for birth and death certificates and we need a little. and we need a little extra money to be transferred over to the, to the expenses side of statistics.
I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfers as presented.
Second.
Mr. Granberg, seconds, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Takes us to Item Nine and the outstanding bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the outstanding bills in the amount of $120,174.74.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Granberg, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. To Item Ten, seeking your approval for the specs and the authorization for purchase of Ford Ranger to replace the 1997 Chevrolet that the inspector, county inspector uses.
I'll make a motion to approve the specs and for purchase of the 2024 Ford Ranger pickup for the county inspector as outlined in the capital equipment portion of the 1920 budget.
Is there a second?
No, sir.
Your voice sounds different today, that is you?
That is me.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that takes us to the request to authorize purchase of the two servers for the law enforcement center also budgeted.
Sheriff, can you tell me what are these two servers for?
Mr. Woodring, Lieutenant?
Yes.
Woodring tends to be involved in our ZERKER and electronic law enforcement center issues, which is why you're here speaking.
Yes, sir. So, we had two current servers actually, which are federated according to our Hill Country IT, Texas Guard IT for the county. Says they're critical and need to be replaced before they crash. These two server, well, currently there's one server, excuse me. This current one server controls all the information coming in and out of the law enforcement center.
Okay.
So, the reason we're going with two is one will be the brains, the control, and the other will store all the information. So, if one goes down, it's on the second one to kind of back up. As well, with this, earlier we're having an issue with the district course and the district clerk and county attorney promoting into the ZERKER system or something like that for us. And that's because of the servers that we have. So, these new servers will better allow that for people to be able to remote into ZERKER, obtain the information that we all want to get.
And he's been saying this for a while, right? That they're on borrowed time?
Yes, he has.
So, I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of two servers for the LEC as outlined in capital equipment in the amount to total $16,620.
No, sir.
Authorizing me to sign to add four users to the existing ZERKER contract for body cameras, this involves our new folks, our new positions.
I need to correct you, that's not the ZERKER contract, it's the Axon contract.
All right.
This is to add cameras for the new deputies the commissioners gave us, plus additional camera for our investigations divisions when they conduct interviews.
I'll make a motion to authorize the county judge to accept and sign the quote to add four users to the existing Axon contract for body cameras.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Granberg, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The, the opportunity to place a director on the Blanco County Appraisal District is?
No, number twelve.
Did I skip one?
Yes, number twelve.
My mistake, thank you. Authorizing me to sign to add four users to the existing Axon contract for body cameras. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Granberg, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now, we go to the appraisal district board member. We, I think you have some material in front of you, I hope. I have spoken with Mr. Coleman, I think I see him in the room, and he has agreed to continue serving if you so choose. You can see the list of candidates for the board, and I think they're, they look like they are all holdovers. I'm guessing every one of the board members wants to be reappointed. Our designated representative based on our votes has been Shelton Coleman. And again, he's agreed to continue serving if you so choose. If you, if you would like to, he did say that he would not mind in the slightest if you wanted to find someone else. So, if you have someone else in mind, we have a little time. I currently have a deadline, I think it even says in here what the deadline is. So, we have a little time, one or two more meetings if you, if you want to do a search for others. If you're satisfied with Mr. Coleman's representation, then we could go ahead and cast our lot of ballots now, or we can split them up if you care to do that.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to cast 1,104 votes to, for Shelton Coleman as our representative for the Blanco County Appraisal District Board of Directors for a two-year term for 2021.
Is there a second?
No, sir.
Mr. Weir, seconds, discussion. For discussion purposes, Mr. Coleman doesn't come here and report to you all very generally. He is certainly open to our views, made that clear during the conversation, and we don't really micromanage him either. He seems to be, based on my experience, he seems to be pretty good at reflecting the county Commissioners' Court opinion on things, basically a conservative viewpoint. I've attended a meeting or two and he seems to, again, represent the Commissioners' Court well. So, I just wanted to give you that additional input. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This, Spies needs authorization to advertise for the county employee that we've authorized to serve down in the annex in Blanco.
I make a motion authorizing the tax office to advertise for an employee in Johnson City and Blanco newspapers for two weeks.
Is there a second?
No, sir.
Mr. Eager, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then, the next item is a sort of ministerial to renew our automobile policy with the Texas Association of Counties, which has, in the last two years, has been amazing at their coverage of us. We've gotten very good recoveries. I think Ms. Swift would verify that for you.
I make a motion to authorize the county judge to sign the automobile policy with the Texas Association of Counties.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Granberg, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that takes us to the Trinity Oaks Preserve subdivision plot.
Yes, sir, this will be our final reading of the plot, the Trinity Oaks Preserve, which is in the Round Mountain area. And I talked with the developers this morning, and there's only one change that I'd like to make in here is on Page Two and on Number Five, where it says, "The property owners are advised that they and/or Trinity Oaks at Round Mountain POA are responsible for the maintenance of the streets until maintenance is accepted by Blanco County." And I want to add to that until, to make it say, "Maintenance of the streets unless or, unless and until the maintenance is accepted by Blanco County." This is going to be a gated subdivision, so it is not eligible for a county to maintain the road. So, I just want to make that pointed out in there, and they've agreed to that. So, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final subdivision plot for Trinity Oaks Preserves and make sure, well, and also I'd like to note that this will be a night sky friendly neighborhood. So, but I'd like to make a motion to approve the final subdivision plot of Trinity Oaks Preserves when all the files have been paid and everything, all the fees have been paid and everything's filed.
Is there a second?
No, sir.
Commissioner Eager, discussion. Just for the purposes of Ms. Wald's minutes, the idea of the small modification is to remove any expectation that the county is definitely going to take over that road of the subdivision, just like every other possibility. We may or may not as time develops.
Correct, and it is, like I said, it is a gated community, which does not allow us to take over the roads. And they understand that and it was just a...
But if they opened the gates...
They took the gates down.
It doesn't necessarily...
Correct.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that takes us to Item Seventeen. The City of Blanco is applying, I'm not a hundred percent sure where they are in the process yet, I think we have somebody here. Yes, we do. Why don't you come on forward while I introduce this. Is applying to be an international dark sky community, and they have asked for the Commissioners' Court to offer a letter in support or a resolution in support thereof. We actually have a draft resolution supporting those efforts. And would you like to?
Yes, sir, I will. My name is Wayne Gosnell, I'm a resident of Blanco County Precinct One. I'm here today as president of Blanco County Friends of the Night Skies. We're a county-wide organization, we're dedicated to helping individuals, landowners, and government entities to preserve the night skies for the benefit and enjoyment of residents and tourists alike. In, three years ago, in 2016, this Commissioners' Court cast a resolution that we deeply appreciate to support the night sky and encourage the preservation of the night skies above Blanco County. That has been very, very helpful to do things such as Commissioner Lisbon just said, and that is to convince subdivisions moving here to institute voluntary restrictions on their outdoorly support. Has no legal authority to require that, but you can encourage that, and you've done that thanks to people like Jerry Thompson, one of our members, Bob Heinlein, Southern Blanco County Doug member. We've had success in four of the five subdivisions that we've attempted to do this with, making the night sky friendly with us. So, we are making progress. Blanco's ISD, Blanco is applying to become an international dark sky community. This is a recognition awarded by the International Dark Sky Society in Tucson, Arizona. It is extremely difficult to get, it's a long application, the application right now almost hasn't finished. Currently, it's fifty-four pages long, has twelve appendices, it's a massive thing. Part of the department for this application is to demonstrate political support of the night skies, which you have done, and the resolution claims simply does that, supports Blanco's application to become an international dark sky community. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution supporting the City of Blanco's application to be designated as an international dark sky community.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Granberg, second, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item Number Eighteen is another proclamation for your consideration. It is, it is for the League of Women Voters, trying to save time and maybe not read the entire thing, but I'll get the highlights. It's a nonpartisan organization, established in 1919, so they've been around one hundred years encouraging citizens to vote, they inform voters, and they mobilize citizens to vote. They were founded, I guess this League of Women Voters, Hill Country, Texas, was founded in Kerrville in 1979, and in October of this year, the folks in Blanco County sought the assistance of the Kerrville group to form a unit with members who vote in Blanco County. And the League of Women Voters, Hill Country, believes in democracy where every person has to desire the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate, and they work to devote to the League's mission of empowering voters. Now, therefore, and this is the part for you to consider, now therefore be proclaimed that the Blanco County Commissioners' Court celebrates the accomplishments and contributions of the League and hereby congratulates the League of Women Voters, Hill Country, Blanco County Unit, on its organization and wishes the League continued success in the next one hundred years.
Can I give them? I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation celebrating the accomplishments and contributions of the League of Women Voters.
Is there a second?
No, sir.
Mr. Eager, discussion.
There's one spot in here that I just pointed out to Connie that is just missing one letter, so then she'll make that correction.
And with that correction, are there any, is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Come on up, so we make sure we get you on the, I didn't realize you're here, I'm sorry, Ms. Hudson.
That's okay. Just wanted to say thank you very much for the proclamation and the League. We decided to be a unit because we're so small and that we work under the umbrella of Kerrville. And as we crow, hopefully which people do, and provide, registering voters and providing nonpartisan information to educate voters so that they can go and vote with the assurance that they are making their determination of what they want to vote for and the person that they want to vote for. It's very important that we do this in a nonpartisan way, and we welcome anyone in Blanco County who wants to join us, and we give you thanks.
Of course, that's how the Rotary Club down in Blanco started, was as a unit of Something Ranch, the bigger, the mothership south of there. And now, they are a freestanding, I believe they're a freestanding member, organization.
We just want to get more voter participation. The more that we're involved and the more that people understand open government and participating in government, the more representative we'll be of the citizens of the county.
So, it's on record, who did you bring with you?
I did. I have a bag of this with me. And Deanne, there's several, anyone that's involved with the League, please stand up. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you tonight.
Number Nineteen involves the, the pipeline easements by Blanco County in favor of Kinder Morgan, and you've heard considerable discussion about them for months. And, gonna take a little time introducing this. This is my opportunity to get to, get to respond, I guess, to a little of this. Let me start out by saying that I'm an American, I believe in energy independence for this country, I'm a Texan, I believe in jobs for the Texas economy, and I'm a Blanco County citizen and charged with doing what we can to protect the citizens of Blanco County. When I, I don't remember the exact day, but I want to say it was in September or August of last year when I first became... of last year, when I first became aware of a, of the Permian pipeline, and I can assure you that the night before, I, I, I didn't put my head on the pillow and go, Lord, please send a pipeline through Blanco County, nobody, I, there's nobody in this room, I'm pretty sure there are Kinder Morgan representatives in this room, they don't go to sleep at night going, gosh, I sure would like to have a pipeline through my front yard, I mean, nobody does, and I get that. But I, I, I live this job attempting to do actions, not words, and that's why I resist the resolution so, well, a couple of reasons, one, I'm not sure that the majority of Blanco County citizens feel the way that, that we've been hearing for some time from a few loud folks, and secondly, I don't believe in doing something that's not going to be productive for us, and I don't really feel the resolution was going to get us anywhere. The options that you have today, when you look at this agreement, one is to delay, which seems to be the, the idea for some, the other is, don't do, don't do anything, don't do these agreements, don't do them at all, and, and we will, that's okay, we will find ourselves in the same position that a landowner is, because essentially we are treated, the ease, the road easements, which is our only real hook in this, the easements will be treated like landowner interest, and we will be off, given an offer, we can refuse the offer, and then we can go to a special commission, Commissioners' hearing, and then we can go on through the court system, and we can hire attorneys, and we can go that route, and in my estimation, the pipeline will still go through, what will stop the pipeline, if, if anything, isn't us, whether the Corps of Engineers stops the pipeline or not is completely out of Blanco County Commissioners' Court's hands, or any other Commissioners' Court's hands, so, my goal was more about trying to address the issue, and address the concerns that have been raised, I don't really subscribe to the theory about death and destruction, and blast zones, and incineration zones, and all of that, and, but if I did, I would have signed the resolution first thing, and gotten my poster, and I'd be standing out on the street corner going, go away, no pipeline, I don't see this pipeline as any more of a risk than the rest of what we do in our human existence, whether it's tractor trailer rigs with fuel that drives through Blanco and crash into buildings, or whether it's you and I getting to the courthouse this morning, or whatever, it's part of life. Having said that, and of course, we can't all meet as a, as a group, so Commissioner Eker, and Commissioner Leesman, and Commissioner Granberg, have not had as much opportunity to be involved in this, so that we did not violate the law, but Commissioner Weir and I looked at it considerably, and he has some building, some construction expertise which we drew on, and I just, and I involved the county attorneys, wherever they are in the room, the county attorney's office to a large extent, and we started out with two things that we'd heard a lot and tried to, tried to address, and one was the number of pipelines coming through Blanco County, now, of course, we have four in the north end of the county already, and we had, despite whatever, what a lot of people say, there was a pipeline that tracks very similar to where this proposed pipeline tracks now, in the south, I, I see some conversations that acts like there never was one there, but there was for fifty-five years, but, one of the concerns is that, that South Blanco County, that that route would become a super, superhighway for pipelines, and frankly, this distressed Commissioner Weir and I, like it distresses other folks, didn't really, didn't really want to become that, and so, one of the non-negotiable items, and, and the Kinder Morgan folks had always said, we'll, we'll only do one pipeline, and we'll only put natural gas in it, and so, I wanted them to put their, put that in paper, put that in writing, and make it a legally binding document, and we, we asked them to do that, and they did, so, we, we've attempted to make it so that no more pipelines come through that easement, by them or by anybody else in that easement, and we've attempted to make it so that nothing other than what they promised would go through that pipe, will go through that pipe, in addition, Commissioner Weir worked hard with them about road crossings, we wanted them to be deep enough so that when majestic hills and some of these subdivisions come along, and somebody decides to do fiber optics so that we can have internet out in the country, we wanted, we didn't want there to be a pipeline issue, so we asked them to bury it deeper than they might otherwise, we, we drew on text dot standards to get there, as I remember. We started out asking them to bore from, from easement line to easement line, and then concrete the whole thing, and learned that that was, while it was good intentions, it was a bad idea, that, that coating on the pipe has some sort of chemical reaction to concrete, and that would be a bad idea, so we learned along the ways, but we attempted to do what we could to improve the safety and the viability of, of them crossing our roads, right? And then, at some point, it, it came into my head that, well, gosh, maybe we ought to get paid really, really a lot of money for crossing our roads, and I asked them to do that, they resisted that because, and that would have just been money, put in the county coffers for you to spend however you choose to spend it, but they resisted that for the reason being that it would set a precedent, they'd have to pay every county in the same way, and we were asking for a lot, and it was apparently considerably out of bounds, however, they opened up the idea of an alternative, which are these community investment amounts, and I have had to say to Commissioner Weir, and to people in the courthouse, and now to you, and to everyone, that, including my spouse, that this is my list, this isn't anybody, and, and everyone would have a different list, I chose the education foundations for the two school areas, I chose the ESDs because somebody had to, and I did it, everybody else would have a different list, but you have to start somewhere, this is where we started, and I haven't had really too much complaining about it, the, the amounts were kind of negotiated out to get to where we, the best, we got the best deal we think we could, and I, I can't help but emphasize that in the alternative, if we elect to just not do anything, and just say, no, no pipeline in the Hill Country, then what we will, in my estimation, what we will wind up with is a court order authorizing the condemnation to cross our easements, and minimal payment, and none of this, so, because there is no obligation to make any of these community investments, at least not legal obligation, moral, that's another story, I think, I think it's money well spent, that's why, that's how we got to where we are, what am I missing?
Judge, I agree that we didn't invite Kinder Morgan here, they showed up, they came, they came to us later, the county found out about it pretty late in the process, and we had to react at that point, the first, the first thing I did was I felt that it was our obligation to make sure that the constituents in my precinct and in the county were informed, and knew exactly what we knew, as little as we knew at that time, as we knew it, we shared it, so what, what we did is, I figured as soon as I heard that there was a rally of whenever y'all called, when Tred met at the courthouse in City of Blanco, I went there, I went there and I met with y'all, a lot of my folks in this room right here, and stood there, listened to exactly what everybody said, I made myself available, listened to everybody around, I was invited, and I could say I was almost treated fairly, you know, when we were there, but with that, I told everybody when I stood up there, and I haven't changed, I said, I'm gonna be here, I'll get as much information as I can share with you, I'll make you available to you, we'll make sure that what I know, I will share with you, haven't changed since, it's been that way all along, whenever somebody, and I see people in this room that email me, have come to my office, have been in here numerous times, and when you ask me whether you needed a, a map from Kinder Morgan, or whatever, if I could get it through the representatives, or whoever I was talking with, Kinder Morgan, I got it, and I see, I see faces in this room that I have sent email after email, answering questions, I made, made available times to sit at the Red Bud Cafe, or whatever, meet with people, and we've done it, done it all along throughout the process, I wanted to make sure, like I said on day one, that that night, in the courthouse in Johnson City, in Blanco, that I wanted to have a dialogue with Kinder Morgan that I could share with y'all, and I've done exactly that, every time I got information, and I, all the way down, I see people sitting in this room that know this fact, that when you ask me for maps, you ask me for information, I got it, when you needed links to people, whether it was in Kinder Morgan, or whatever, I got it for you, if I could get it from them, I got it to you, it's been that way all along, it's open, we had looked at that, and when they came to me, I had constituents tell me, Tom, you're wrong, they're gonna bring four or five pipelines down the road, I went straight to the judge and said, Judge, we can't have this happen, we just can't have it happen, what can we do to reassure ourselves that, that that won't happen again, so what did I do, I took the information, the request from a constituent, and I took it straight back to the judge and to the county, and the way, we can't all sit together and just discuss this, so we had to do it with a committee, or just a judge or, or, that's what we did, so we took that, we wrote it down, then we took, I hear another, another group coming to me, and they said, you know they're gonna turn around and gonna start pumping oil through it, and I'm telling them what other chemicals and all that, I said, okay, I'll take that, we'll run, we did, we went back and we ran with it, we made sure that it was gonna be one content, we said, okay, we're gonna put that in, I've heard it, I heard it, I heard it on YouTube videos, and other rallies, where Kinder Morgan stood up and said it's gonna only be one, I, I heard that, I saw them say it, but I didn't have it in writing, so what did we do, came back, we made sure that we were gonna put it in writing, and then we said, wait a minute, they're gonna, they're gonna take it, sell it to another company, and then it starts all over, we're gonna, let's see if we can do something about that, so we gotta make sure that one pipe, one content, matter your own, so we did that, we worked that out, so we've been taking every request that anybody has come to me, and worked it to the best that we can see that would benefit the county, safety wise, came underneath the roads, I said, man, you can't just go thirty inches underneath the road, we need, at that time, we were talking six to eight feet under the road, I said, some of our ditch lines in the county I know, and all the Commissioners sitting here now, are four, five feet deep, some of the ditch lines, they need to be below that, you can't have a guy in the back door digging a phone line up and hit, hit the pipeline, so what did we do, we looked at it, now I've set up at fifty inches or five feet to the top of the pipe, from the lowest point in the roadway, so, there we are, I mean, we, we worked, it worked and worked, and it's been a compromise all along, back and forth, and I know some of you folks have ideas, and you think you could get them to do something different, we worked and did exactly what we could, I think we've come up with, and we worked on it for months, we've worked every, and when it came to compensation, I always felt, if you can't stop them, make them pay it, when individuals came to us and said, Tommy, can y'all help us stop the pipeline, I said, I don't know how you can do it, I thought about it one time, how could we do some type of a, a bond or an easement across the whole pipeline, protect people until they cleaned up and left, and I was informed you can't do that, it's, it's private property, individual, one-on-one with Kinder Morgan, and a lot of folks did that, a lot of folks have worked with Kinder Morgan, through their lawyer or whatever, and come up with something that they're satisfied with, the county is at that point too, we've got to come up, and we've decided we've got to do something, if, if a member of any of these groups stopped the pipeline, they stopped the pipeline, but if they don't, we're responsible for making sure if they come through, it's done right, we've done, we've reviewed, we've also, I, I sit on other committees with other counties, I sit there and talk to people from Williamson County, Lee County, all these other counties that have pipelines running all through them, Williamson County, thirty-two pipelines, Lee County, numerous pipelines running all through them, I say, how do y'all do it, how did you do it, what did you do, and I got information from them, we brought that information forward, so that's, that's the kind of thing we did, just sit back and, and wait to this day right here, we've been working constantly, trying to gather information, and make sure that we did the right thing, and I, would I rather them be going through Kansas yet, but they're not, they're coming through here, and we've made an agreement with them, and it's, and we've, we've got it here, it's up to date, whether to pass it or kick the can, but there's at some point, they're either gonna, we're gonna meet them somewhere else, or we're gonna meet them here, so, that's basically all I have, we've been working with them all along, y'all say that we don't, that we don't bring information back to you, and y'all were left unaware, that's not true, made you very aware of everything we had.
Let me slow you down a little bit.
Please.
I've got three points, the first is for the Commissioners, but really for anybody in Blanco County, whether you like our efforts or not, that's fine, that's on, that's on us, but I, I can't, I can't really go on without taking a moment to compliment the county attorney's office, and in particular, our Assistant County Attorney, Kim Ashby, because she's been there every step along the way, she worked very, very hard, there was even a point where Kinder Morgan representatives indicated that they liked her work product so much that we're gonna steal it, and that's, and I use that word humorously, but at any rate, she's done an incredible job, she definitely is worth the money, and like I said, like it or not, like, like the fact that there's a pipeline or not, or what the deal is or not, you, she, her, her work product is beyond question. Number two is, there was some discussion during the comment period about the bond, and, and a person with some expertise thinks it's too low, and I, I'd just like to speak to the bond, the, the road bond, now, if I understand it right, if they tear up the road, they being Kinder Morgan, they're supposed to fix the road.
Throughout the process, while they're there?
And it doesn't matter if it takes ten dollars or ten million dollars to fix the road.
The agreement is that they will fix it back to where, where it began, from day one?
And the two million dollar bond is in case, a year after they're gone, and you or Commissioner Granberg notices a failure in the road, that we have two million dollars to go against fixing a county road, not a state highway, not a state farm road, a county road.
It's a two-year maintenance bond, and when we first brought it to them, they said we normally don't do that, and that's, that's what they said, and I said, well, that's, here's, here's why I wonder, is because you can break the top seal code on the road or whatever, you can break it loose from the under, from your subgrade. loose from the under, uh, from your subgrade and leave, and a year or two later it comes apart. You've seen it in other places. So we're asking for a two-year bond after they, after they leave, that if something breaks loose and it's a cause of theirs, if it's ten inches of rain washes the road out, that's different. But if it just comes apart because they're going back and forth across the county road, then they're responsible for it. And we have a bond, a, a bond to back that in case something happens, we have the money to fix it. So that was something that we brought in and they, they agreed to. At first they, they had never done it before. But, uh, those are the things that we were looking at, because I had constituents saying, "They're gonna tear the road up." Well, I knew they were. I mean, anytime they build a subdivision, they tear the road up. So, uh, I mean, it's one of those things that happens, it's part of doing business. But I'm from Blanco, I was, I was raised here. I don't, I do not want anything to happen to the county. I don't, or any of the members of the county, any of the residents. Uh, we've got to do the best we can to make sure it's safe. But we gotta make sure that they're compensated for it too. And, uh, I think we, there's also residual, people are saying there's not enough money and they're not asking for it. There's residual money coming along later on as the, as the pipeline's being used. And that runs out for a good while, so.
And then commissioners, I, uh, just like to make a couple of points on the record, so there's not questions on the backside. Uh, the two hundred thousand dollars proposed for the Blanco County Community Resource Center is not, uh, is not earmarked in any way, it's for them to defray their cost of construction of the Blanco County Community Resources Center. Uh, and, and how they manage that money is really up to them. The forty-eight thousand dollars to the sheriff's office, uh, is specifically, in my mind, intended for the sheriff's office to purchase, uh, the electronic billboards for traffic safety and event safety and, uh, uh, incidents, uh, casualties and such. The hundred and seventy-two thousand versus the hundred thousand for the emergency service district north and, uh, south is, uh, the hundred thousand dollars each was intended to help them defray the cost of additional fuel or supplies or whatever by virtue of having these extra people in the county for a period of time. And the seventy-two thousand dollars, as I understand it, should cover the cost of that, uh, generator that they badly need for that brand-new facility down in Blanco, the combined EMS and fire department building. The other thing is the thirty-four thousand dollars each for the two ISDs, I, I've heard and read comments that that's, uh, opinions are too low. It's a, it's not a large number, but then again, the largest number I've ever seen, uh, the foundations get is about five thousand dollars. So it's nearly seven times the largest I've ever seen. Uh, so I don't consider that a really small number and I think that the, both foundations will be glad to give that money, uh, for the benefit of their teachers and their grants programs and the students, uh, in, uh, in advancing education. And we're not just talking about, uh, uh, a scholarship to Harvard, we're talking about, uh, the Texas State Technical College, uh, opportunities for people to go a different direction. Uh, this, this money can be used in a lot of ways. And then finally, on the sheriff's office, the hundred and sixty-two thousand, well, not finally, excuse me, the, the hundred and sixty-two thousand for the sheriff's office is intended to garner another patrol unit to try to keep us up to date, uh, and, uh, with our vehicles. And then, uh, uh, deal with the transportation issue of, uh, getting, uh, inmates back and forth from the jail to the court, as that's, the dockets are becoming very large. Uh, I think there were like three pages of dockets. And then lastly, uh, the road and bridge improvement fund, two hundred thousand dollars, uh, that was intended to just go in the special fund and much like the money that you all appropriated years ago, uh, that you split among the four of you for road projects, this is, this, this is seed money, this is the start. It's, it's not really a lot, uh, but it's, it's the beginning for other safety, I, I think it should be for strictly for safety and improvement projects, not, not part of your regular routine maintenance and, and budget. Uh, but it, it should be the start for, uh, for looking at some of the bigger problems that we have in this county, the, some of the major low-water crossings and, and things of that nature. And that was the intent. What else?
Well, Judge, uh, for the folks that haven't seen the, the, uh, the permits and actually seen the drawings on them, stuff this, it's six county road crossings. If all combined is four hundred and twenty feet. So the county's giving, uh, right, if that works out, they'd be right at a million dollars to cross four hundred and twenty feet. And, uh, and six county road crossings. So that's what, that's what the, the.
And then as far as the engineering, all the drawings appear to be very professionally done and, and, uh, we just.
They're available for review if it will be bylaws.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if it'd be necessary to, to review all this again, I mean, there is, is an engineer signing off on the.
A non-professional engineer.
On the, uh, document, so somebody's putting their, their engineering stamp on it.
There's no stamp on it?
There's no stamp.
All right, so, uh, this is the commissioners' court time, uh, to discuss. And I'm going to, uh, and I see a hand that's hanging up back there and a couple people have offered gratuitous comments, so I'm gonna ask you all, uh, what your preference is, because if we're gonna let anybody else in on the discussions, then I'm gonna ask, uh, that the pipeline people come forward and get to have opportunity to counterpoint, uh, or we can keep it here among ourselves. Do you have a preference?
Well, that question, Judge, that question right there that you just asked could be answered, I believe you did, no? Possibly.
So you're in favor of maybe opening up a little bit more?
Yeah, at this point, yes.
Warning, this is not gonna be down to hand, uh.
Right. Right. Sure. I mean, I'm one of, I'm one of four of y'all, so y'all, come on, man.
Yes, I'd like that question answered as far as the engineering, is that a professional engineer, all these questions be answered?
While they're thinking on that, I'm gonna let the lady with her hand, but she'll come up.
Oh, Ms. Free.
I'm Renne Free. I totally appreciate.
Ma'am, just, just so we know, I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, Ms. Harrison to put you on the clock.
That's fine. I totally appreciate you trying to come up with an agreement with all the things that we've talked about. Here's the problem, you did it behind closed doors, basically, we had, this is the only opportunity we had to comment, which is why I took my hand up. This is the only opportunity, and, and it's almost like you're not even listening to what we have said, Judge Bray. You're shuffling through papers as we're talking about our comments, you just put it on the agenda, we just found out about it on Friday. It's, it's like, it's the process, now you're gonna do a vote. And so on the spot, I hope you all consider what you have heard all of us say, because this is our only opportunity. And this should not have been like this. It should have been put out there so we would have the opportunity to comment before you get to this point. So that's all I ask, is that you consider what we have said. We're not, we're not saying, "Don't do the pipeline." We, we would actually like it moved. But it, it's like, yes, it has to come through here, definitely, do the best you can. But a million dollars compared to they make, Kinder Morgan makes, is, stands to make ten million dollars a day, it's not a good agreement. That's what I'm saying. It's not a good agreement.
Thanks.
It could be better.
Thank you.
Can we respond to that?
Sure.
Ma'am? Can you come back up? What's the number?
Well, I was.
Give me the number, what's the number?
Ten.
Ten million, at least.
Crosses one hundred feet?
It's one day for them!
Bet.
It's one day! One day! And people are in condemnation here, and people are getting eleven million and four-point-two million. I know two people who got one-point-three million and, and that's for a piece of property. This is a county! At least, I mean, I don't know, it's twenty! It's, it's like, one million is peanuts!
Does the pipeline crossing your property in Gillespie County?
No.
So you're not getting any money?
No! No! I am here representative of the public safety and the water safety of the Texas Hill Country.
Have you ever spoken on this issue before?
Yes.
Here?
Yes. At least twice, maybe three times.
And, of course, the Blanco City Council?
Yes.
Probably in Gillespie County?
No.
No?
No, Blanco County.
Hayes County?
No.
Just here?
Just in Blanco County, because I own property in Blanco.
Thank you.
Why not Gillespie?
I'm sorry?
Why not Gillespie County?
Because they already had, it, they're themselves organized and they were already working on it. And I live in the very tip of Gillespie County, I pay school taxes in Blanco County, I own property in Blanco County. So when I was informed of the meeting happening, it's actually closer for me even to come to Blanco than it is to go to, to.
Gotcha.
That's why.
Thank you. Mr. Granberg, do you want to, uh, I, I think we're done, but thank you.
Thank you for listening, thank you for the opportunity.
Do you want to hear from the pipeline votes?
Yes.
Concerning safety and.
The, the engineering, if, the crossings are all engineered, how they are, how they're done. We've seen the drawings, but I wanna know more information on that.
Are you open?
Commissioners, Judge Bray, I'm on four with Kinder Morgan. Um, I think you were asking about, the question was whether these documents were stamped by a professional engineer, correct? If you look at the documents, each one is the professional engineer in stamp, state of Texas, professional engineer, license one-one-nine-eight-six-one, Patrick McAllister, MGP Pipeline Contractors of Houston, uh, and National Trent Safety, NTS, NTS engineer. Each document has a professional stamp.
Okay, thank you.
Hang on just one second. Mr. Welch, I can see you, it's, it's just almost rude. We'll get to you in a minute, sir. Sir, we'll get to you in a minute.
Good. That's all I ask.
Do you have nothing else you wanna say?
Well, uh, I think the, um, discussions we have had, I can recall, Judge, um, I think it was September of last year, uh, where this county was the first county that, uh, asked and required us to come in and do a presentation. I think the commissioners will remember that. Uh, and we did so, and we spent about forty-five minutes at that time answering questions publicly. Uh, we had a public meeting, um, in the county. We have, myself or, uh, others from our project team have probably met fifteen to twenty times with, with either you or the commissioners and responded to dozens and dozens of information. From a project standpoint, uh, we've made, uh, over a hundred routing adjustments, including several in the county. We are almost at a hundred percent land acquisition in Blanco County, over ninety-five percent across the entire route. The pipeline is under construction, uh, in the western face of, of, uh, the projects, already pipeline in the ground. Uh, so we're under construction about seventy miles. Uh, we are in the final stages of permitting, as you mentioned, for engineers, additional wildlife service that is pending, so we anticipate that to be finalized by year's end or early next year. Uh, and then begin construction in the county. We do have a pipe yard in the county, a contractor yard, uh, that was part of the discussion for the investments we are making in the county specific to the temporary impacts of construction workers, and those construction workers will also have positive impact. Our experience has been, and I think this can be proven, uh, by looking at any pipeline that was constructed, uh, additional revenues to the county from restaurants and businesses are greatly benefited by a temporary, uh, fusion of construction workers. Uh, I think you mentioned Commissioner Weir too, that isn't, uh, about ongoing revenues, we're paying, uh, we estimate eight to nine hundred thousand annually. That's not a one-time payment, that will be ongoing. Uh, it's based upon the valuation of the pipeline. So that will be property tax revenue, sales tax revenue related to the construction workers and others in the area, we're employing off-duty police officers as well, um, for security purposes. So I think there's, there's a lot of collateral revenue that will be ongoing. From a construction perspective, we anticipate, um, the bulk of the construction activity to be over the first six to eight months of the project, um, and, but, construction activity to be continuing through the end of next year and then in service with the project, um, early twenty-twenty-one. Uh, I've been every one of the sixteen counties, uh, on this project multiple times. And, uh, I will tell you that this discussion and negotiation of the county has been, um, a tough one, and you all have stood your ground and have, have done things that we have never done before, you've required of us, and you laid them out, Commissioner, in your comments and Judge in your comments. So, uh, the efforts to, uh, talk about, um, pipeline safety, to, to adjust the route, to, to require, as we have said from the outset on this project, it's only a natural gas pipeline. It's a forty-two inch pipeline, it's only gonna be transported natural gas, we've said it. Uh, we've now, we quickly, we put it in every road agreement, excuse me, in every landowner agreement, is part of the actual agreement of the landowner. And now it's part of a county agreement, further, uh, putting in writing, if you will, uh, that commitment to only transport natural gas. So I understand and appreciate, uh, the, the concerns that have been put forward and I understand that, that there are strong opinions about our industry and pipelines in general. Uh, but this is a project that is designed to transport natural gas that is currently being flared away, flared away, that means burned off into the atmosphere in West Texas. And capturing that natural gas and transporting it to homes and businesses in Texas. Might I add, uh, delivery to Texas, delivery, uh, points along the way, so there's gonna be additional natural gas supply immediately for Texas and for the Hill Country region. In addition to, we've had multiple inquiries for additional natural gas access from Hill Country Utilities. That's what these pipelines are, they serve a particular purpose at the outset, because in order to make a, an investment in a project like this, a two billion, uh, two billion dollars, you have to have shipping supply committed. But it also provides a supply, and that includes Blanco County, that includes Colbo County and Hayes County, Gillespie County, for in the future. And we've already said, we're already having additional inquiries, uh, for natural gas supply utilities in the Hill Country region from this pipeline, and that will be a continuing source of natural gas supply that you all will have access to, uh, for many, many years to come.
The, uh, number of ten million dollars a day, is that accurate?
No.
You have a approximate?
It's a complete fictional, made-up number.
What's your number?
We're not gonna disclose the specifics of the financial aspects of the project, so, but your number is fictional and made up.
So, I'm gonna ask you to not say your number, because you're speaking with us, we're speaking with you, and we're going to not let this get out of.
Understood, thank you.
Let me ask you though, uh, 'cause it, it has been brought up, can you swear for all of us right now today, there is no compressor station that's going on this pipeline in Blanco County?
That's correct. There's one compressor station in the Hill Country, it's off of Geneski Lane in Gillespie County. And all of the residents there are well aware of that, the county commissioner, I believe, was here earlier, is well aware of that, we've met with the landowners in that particular area multiple times, uh, and, uh, it's, it's, the site is purchased, that is our location.
So if we inadvertently left it out of our. So if we inadvertently left it out of our agreement, and I can't remember if we did or did not, but it was based on some discussions, I think we've always been told there was never going to be one in Blanco County. And you're, you're standing here foregone and everybody swearing to that.
Yes, we, we have our location selected in Gillespie County. And it's already, preliminary construction activity is already on their way there.
Questions?
Mr. Ford, would you go underneath the river?
Yeah.
Do you all change gauge by?
No.
It stays the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, now the pipe that did cross, since you brought that up, the pipe that was there for fifty-five years, crossed the river on the riverbed, and there are pieces of it still, still sitting there that they didn't take up. They just left, they cut them at the river and left them. What's your pipe going to do?
The method of crossing, we're still evaluating that. Typically, it's a directional drill underneath the river. But our engineers are evaluating that and haven't made a final determination. That'll also be in consultation with the Corps of Engineers in their permit granting process because that is a jurisdictional water body. So they'll ultimately make the determination on how we cross. But there are multiple methods of crossing, open cut, others. But typically for a water body like that, it's a directional drill.
All right, anything else?
No.
Thanks, sir.
Could you explain the directional crossing?
The lady with the media would like you to explain directional drilling.
So the typical pipeline construction process is to dig a nine-foot trench, roughly. And, and place the pipeline in a backfill with a minimum of three foot of cover. For county roads, as was mentioned, that's a boring process, that's basically a straight bore across from one side to another. The directional drill process is more of a gradual descent. So if you have a river or water body, whatever it might be, you can have the ability to begin your descent on a pipeline from a distance, even a significant distance from the shoreline. And this can be from a small river to the Mississippi River. And we've done both of those. But the technology is that you will begin your descent as you approach the water body, depending on the uniqueness of the features of the approach. Because we, what we have found, and what the jurisdictional agencies have found, is that the areas of environmental concern and cultural relevance typically are near the river as you approach. So you want to, and danger species, threatened species, et cetera. So you want to not only not impact the water body itself, but also don't want to impact the approach. So that's why you can begin your descent, depending on the surveys and what we find in that particular area, five hundred, a thousand or more feet from the edge of the water body. And what will happen is, you will say you are a three foot of cover in a particular area, it could be deeper depending on the particular area we're in, and then begin your descent. And horizontal directional drills, we haven't made a determination specific to Blanco River, but you can be thirty, forty, fifty feet below the bottom of the river. And you don't construct like this. You do a gradual slope. So you will start down from the three feet and then to gradual slope, doing a pilot hole, a small pilot hole, and continuing to bore that out until you get to your forty-inch, forty-two inch plus width. So the pilot hole will go through. The attempt is, the goal is to hit something solid at the bottom of the river, bedrock or something solid that we can secure the pipe in so it's never going to move. And then slowly make your ascent on the other side. Again, on the other side of the river, your ascent would be, so if you're, say you're thirty feet, for example, you may be, when you come back up and you're on the other side of the water bed, maybe you're going to be fifteen or twenty, and you will slowly elevate back up to the three-foot depth on the other side. So that's the general process. The technology has improved significantly over the years and it offers a way to cross environmentally sensitive areas without ever impacting the service area.
Judge Hayden says that, that you all committed to going like five feet or something all the way through Caldwell County so that they can chisel plow and do farming activities without fear of hitting the pipe. Is that true?
We agreed to on agricultural properties.
And why not us?
That was part of their request to us.
Okay. Anything else?
Now, you said when you bore under the river, the Corps of Engineers will be there inspecting or on-site? Or what will be their involvement?
So that's part of their review process now, and part of our permitting process, is for, to grant the permits, they want to understand how we're going to propose to cross their jurisdictional waters. And they have a wide variety of jurisdictional areas, it's not just enormous rivers. It's areas of, any kind of, even intermittent streams can sometimes be part of a jurisdiction review. So they're reviewing that right now. I guess they, part of their permit will be how those crossings will, according to their recommendations, or actually their direction. And as part of the review process, they are welcome at any time to inspect anything we're doing through the process. And then once we're completed, providing them the information about that construction for their records as well, as part of the permit.
Mr. Ford, when they bore that forty-two inch hole or whatever the final one, is that sealed? Do they put a betonite or some type of sealer? Did they line that hole with, or is it just bored?
So the, you're talking about on the outside of the?
Well, the hole itself going all the way there.
Right.
The bore. Is there a, is there a solution or something that they pump in there or that they line it with? Or whatever product put the pipe through? Or is it just bored as is?
So the hole, we're going to use a betonite as we're going through, which is a clay, it's a non-toxic product. But that will be what we'll be using as we're piloting the hole through. Once, once we're in, depending on where we are, there will be some type of slurry on the outside. If we're going to be, the key is, is our pipe is coated and we don't want that coating to be impacted. So we'll have some type of coating around to make sure that there's no impact to the, to the epoxy that's surrounding the pipe. And this is, it's similar if we're digging a trench, too. If we're in, if there's any, we're going to remove any rocks, but if we're still, we don't want the pipe laying on rocks. So we may put some type of bedding inside the trench as well to make sure that there's no impact, external force impact to the pipe and nick the pipe, nick the coating, which could cause corrosion.
As an administrative law judge years ago, it was kind of this axiom that if nobody was happy, we did the right thing. And right now, I've got people that would like to discuss this ad nauseam. I've got Commissioners probably retired talking about, want to take action. So thank you for your time. I think we're done.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson was the first, Ms. Freed?
I wanted to say if you could ask Mr. Ford to comment on an issue that is relevant to the agreements before you today, namely the issue of what they intend to do with what is known as spoil dirt. When you dig a tunnel under a river or a road, there is dirt that is displaced that must then be disposed of. There's a casual and brief mention of spoil dirt in the agreement that simply says it will be removed. There are rumors going around that, that end market is looking to dispose of spoil dirt. When you bury a forty-two inch pipeline, you will also have dirt left over from the trenches you originally dug. So there will be considerable spoil dirt throughout the route of the pipeline. And spoil dirt has to go somewhere. And the concern that I have about Little Perdantous River is that where they're crossing the river up in Gillespie County, perhaps in other areas in Blanco River, that they may, that they're negotiating to acquire the right to dump spoil dirt along the banks of the rivers. As we know, we live in flash flood alley here in this Hill Country. And it is not prudent, in my view, to have spoil dirt put where it could be within a flood plain or an area that might wash downriver. I have made my concerns known about that issue to the Corps of Engineers, and I don't know what they're doing about it. But since Mr. Ford is here today, and he mentioned spoil dirt in trenches, perhaps he could describe to you all and to us, what do they intend to do in terms of disposal of the spoil dirt?
The, in my view, the road crossings, which are our interest in this today, really don't call for that kind of discussion. However, if the Commissioners are up for it, I'm up for it. But while you all think about it a minute, I just have to say, we've been at this an hour and forty minutes. And if you all are under some illusion that you need it to stay or whatever, you don't. You are, I did not mean, that's why I put you at the front of the agenda so that your father didn't have to stay forever. There's no disrespect to the Commissioners' court or anyone else here. You're welcome to stay as long as you want. I'm going to blame you on the burn ban if we ever get to it. But, but I just wanted you to know that there's no obligation to stay.
Enjoy the conversation, I appreciate you taking care of the county. Thank you. If I give you the opportunity, who will take it?
And Commissioners, do you care to hear about spoil dirt? I'm getting a general note. Okay. All right, what else? What needs to be considered by you today are the two resolutions. One, acceptance of the nation's one would be recognition of some other community involvement. The pipeline easement agreement, the master road use agreement, and.
Well, before we go, I'd like to hear Mr. Welch's comment.
On the labor of this coal mine, I do want to deal with the professional engineer issue. As I read this document here, we have documents that have been prepared by Kinder Morgan. Include the technical drawings and the site locations. We have no set documents for each one. It is from MPG Pipeline Contractors, the contractor that is apparently going to do the construction. Professional engineer's signature stamp is on the traffic study. It's called a traffic control plan. I see no signature or stamp on the design documents for the crossings. The specification for the pipe on each location is contained on the what's called road crossing permit. That's just a question. It has an engineer's initials down there named TR, it doesn't say TR professional engineer. I don't know who TR is, maybe he's a professional engineer. But where I came and where I got my license, the stamp would go with that. Just a question that needs to be investigated. Additionally, I would urge you, please, look my written comments. I haven't had time to do a thorough engineering study on this thing, but I've got a lot of comments. And I gave enough copies to the club that each of you has time to review them. My last today is that you take time, you defer a decision on this. And I would also urge you to consider getting your own professional engineer. I have the utmost respect for the engineers at Kinder Morgan. I don't necessarily have respect for Kinder Morgan and their company. So to me, having an independent eye on such a major issue is extremely important. You might even get Kinder Morgan to pay for the cost of your professional engineer or join in with the joining counties to hire an independent professional engineer. Then could communicate directly with the Corps of Engineers, engineers, the Department of Transportation, pipeline safety engineers, or anyone else and talk technical terms. I respect what Tommy's done, I think he's done a great job on road piece. But quite frankly, I question his knowledge and his allergy to fire protection and monetary technical issues. All I'm asking is give this thorough engineering review. Thank you.
And the fifth document that I could not find for a minute is the investment agreement. So those are the five things before you. While you're thinking of it, I'm going to make a call. I think Ms. Freed has had adequate time since March of last year, speaks for us. However, I think Mr. Casperis is close with the mantle of representing a party and a particular segment of voters. And so I'm going to ask a call on him, since he's got his hand raised. But I really don't intend to call on anyone else.
Thank you, Judge, I appreciate that. And I, just to be clear, I'm representing myself. I have obviously a lot of acquaintances and friends.
Can we, can we put you on the clock also, though?
Okay. So I'm representing myself. So I, I don't understand the rush. This pipeline is going to be here for a very long time. It's going to impact people in the county, maybe in minor ways, hopefully in minor ways, for a very long time. But there's also a risk that will have greater impacts on this county. So any time taken today to make sure we get this right is well spent. Any time taken over the next month or two to make sure we get this right is well spent. So I appreciate that you've extended the comment period is today for that purpose. And I reiterate the previous calls that there be a period of public comment and that there be a public forum in which those comments can be discussed. We need time. You already indicated you had months to prepare this draft agreement. We've had four days to review it. Mr. Ford is in the room. Earlier in this whole process, as Commissioner Weir and the rest of you are aware, we extended an offer for a public forum in order to address these issues. So here we are today, perhaps near the end of the process. And only today are we hearing some of our questions answered. We had that opportunity three months ago. Why is it just today? Why is it when you're called to the podium that we're getting these answers?
We're not, we're not really providing this kind of forum for you to examine these comments to us.
Well, I think that's wrong to you, that only now we're hearing the answers to these questions. And I will also say that thanks to Judge Bray, we, a request was sent for whatever studies Kinder Morgan has done. They have said that they have examined this route. Why can't we, why can't the county, why can't you have access to those examinations, the products of those examinations? Have you had access to those examinations? Again, this pipeline is going to be here a long time. Probably, perhaps low probability that there's an issue. But if there is an issue, big gigantic life-changing risk.
Todd.
We need to get this right.
While you're thinking on this, Commissioners, Judge Kleiger is here, the director of. While you're thinking on this, Commissioners, Judge Klager is here, the director of the, really all Central Texas CRCs, and I don't know that she wants to speak, but if you have questions, or if she wants to speak, she'd want me to, and if she doesn't, if you have questions of her about the CRC?
Yeah, any question, I can give you an A.
No, let's just...
Just spell the time.
Okay.
For the record, the timing, our contractor is going to move us back to opening in January. May, because we still have work to do. So, remind you forward, it will be opening in the end of January.
Okay, yeah, that's right. Just take the mic, actually. Kim Ashby, Assistant County Attorney, I just have one question for you. Have you heard anything today, and this is for the Commissioners' benefit, have you heard anything today that would cause you to recommend us to go back and renegotiate or make modifications to the agreements that we have prepared?
No, I don't think I would.
Okay, thank you. Sorry?
You waiting on anyone?
Well, I'm not waiting on anyone. It's just, we either move forward with this, or we table it, or something in between.
How's your point?
If you choose to take no action, then, then, I guess my question is going to be, what do I take that to mean? Do we put it on a different agenda? Or do I not put it on another agenda, and we just let the cards play out the way they are? I can see Judge Klager and probably some other people there taking deep breaths, because this will mean a lot to them.
Judge, one thing that I would like to raise that I don't think has been raised yet, is there are counties out there that the pipeline's running through that got no money at all?
I don't know of any that have gotten money yet.
City of Kyle.
That's not a county.
Correct, correct.
And by the way, as you can easily point out, the city of Kyle, in order to get that money, had to go through a court system.
That's correct.
And we can do that. We've got a budget for legal fees. It won't be you representing us. We'll have to hire outside counsel, because you're not authorized to represent us in civil litigation. Right?
That's correct, yes.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we table for two weeks. I would like to study Mr. Welch's proposal, and we put it back on the agenda in two weeks. Give us time to study his proposal.
Is there a second? Your motion dies for lack of a second. I'm going to move that the court adopt the two resolutions, and I only do this, if I don't get a second, no hard feelings, I'm good with that. I'm just, I guess, I've put as much work into this as anybody. I know where this is more than most, so I'm prepared to make this motion. And, like I say, if it doesn't happen, that's okay, too. But, purposes of argument, I move that the Commissioners' Court adopt both resolutions that are before you and the three agreements that are for you, namely the pipeline easement agreement with Kinder Morgan, the investment agreement with Kinder Morgan, and the master road use agreement with Kinder Morgan.
And I'm a second there, Judge.
I would like to commend the Judge and Tommy and the county attorneys for, I feel like, a well-put-together documentation. I think you all did an excellent job in the time you all spent.
Well, we're going to take some time with this, because I'm being accused of ram runs, so let's take all the time we need to think this through. You can even withdraw your second if you...
I'm going to withdraw my second. We put a lot of time and effort working on this to get this for the county and for their best interest, and I've got a lot of feedback from a lot of residents in this county, so...
So you have four pipelines going through your precinct.
Yes, sir.
Have you ever had an incident?
No, sir.
How long have you been doing this?
Two thousand eight.
Do you know of any incidents with any of those pipelines?
There's an incident in Hayes County that annually, I have a meeting with Kinder Morgan, and there was an incident within Hayes County that a rock saw come across one of these pipeline, pieces of pipeline. It did leak gas until the valve shut it down. When the first responders arrived, the machine was still running. There was no explosion, there was no, nothing, nothing besides. It hit the gas line, it broke open the gas line, and the valves did their job, and they shut it down.
Deaths?
None.
Injuries?
None.
Now, the three pipelines that you have that go from west to east, and they cross near the zoo up there on 281?
One of which is Kinder Morgan pushing natural gas through there.
But when they go past here, they run right through, right near Convick Hill, Circle C Ranch, Brody Lane?
Correct.
All those people, all that shopping center?
Correct.
Have you ever seen anything where they...
The only notification that Kinder Morgan has provided to me, which, again, is through their annual conversations, is the one incident in Hayes County.
With Kinder Morgan, the other two companies are what, Phillips sixty-six?
Magellan.
Magellan. Between the three of them, how often do they inspect the root area?
Daily.
Daily?
Yeah.
Because they share it, right? They share the responsibility of one flies one day, one flies the next.
Correct.
Do you know, do you have any reason to think they won't be...
No, sir.
Watching this pipeline as carefully?
No, sir.
I just wanted to kind of flesh that out a little bit, for purposes of this motion. Anything else?
I know you all put a lot of work in on it. I wasn't in on the discussions, because Tommy has said, because of legal, but I appreciate what you've gone through.
We've involved other counties. I mean, we've talked to other counties, other municipalities, all of them. I mean, it wasn't something we just sat and drew up. It was something, it was communication for, you and I sit on the Tin County District over here, and we sit and talk to those guys, and they're everything from mayors to judges to commissioners, all of it. And we asked, I mean, there are folks that are dealing with it every day, they have them coming through their counties, and we asked them what's going on, how they do it. There's some of the guys that give us the advice, like, make sure you're on the roads, make sure you do this, do that. Other than that, they end up with lines.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Are you abstaining?
No.
So it's unanimous. Item twenty, and if you all would keep your seats for just a minute, so we don't block disruption, I'm going to get to this last item on the burn ban. As you know, I lifted the burn ban per your order, I think, on Friday, first day?
Thursday.
First day? And by Sunday, I was wishing I had not. Of course, it expires by its own terms today, so the burn ban's off. Completely off now. It was off on Thursday. But when I looked at the winds coming through on Monday, I was very, very concerned and wished I had not looked at the burn ban. I had people like Patrick Watson and others pressuring pretty hard that they wanted to burn stuff, so I did, and it was very, very wet Thursday in front of me. But, here we are, so you have the maps in front of you, which...
Your Honor, we've had some rain, but we, I don't feel we've had enough. I would like to make a motion that we put the burn ban on for another two weeks.
Is there a second?
One second.
Commissioner Weir, second.
Sure.
And let me just, okay, so we're in discussion, and let me say one more thing. Before I lifted it on Thursday, I asked the fire chiefs in Blanco, Johnson City, and Round Mountain, and I consulted with the emergency management coordinators, and did not get anybody objected, so that's why I lifted it at the time that I did. Are you thinking of the exact same kind of order we had, but for two weeks, so that if a torrent on Friday, I can lift it again?
Well, we've had adequate rain north of North American, and down south, and we've had springs. I know there's dry rock behind me, and it's just a tinderbox.
And the sheriff and I have this general disagreement about...
Yes.
...partial burn bans for half the county. So, your burn ban is for the whole county?
For the whole county.
More discussion?
We have ice accumulations over the night in the northern part of the county, which those tend to really soak in the ground a whole lot better than just an average rainfall, so I'm opposed to a burn ban at this point in time.
I got you. Well, we've got high winds, and it's clear enough tonight, it's going to get really cold in the morning, so that's, the humidity's going to drop away, so with the high winds. The wind should subside tonight, too, but still, that's what's scary. I'm looking up, only the right hand, you can see the wind's pretty high.
I believe we've got enough moisture. I think we can just take a chance, leave it on.
Take a chance on pipeline, I'm not going to take a chance on fire.
Here's the rationale, I should give you. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I vote yes.
You're opposed. Your board are against the burn ban?
The burn, yes. I'm for lifting the burn ban.
It's lifted, it's no more, please.
Yeah, keep it...
The motion is to impose a new burn ban for two weeks.
No.
No. Two no's, two ayes.
What say the judge? Two, two, we're waiting. What say the judge?
I'm going to vote yes, and be consulting daily or frequently with the fire officials and the emergency management coordinator, possibly with the center.
Will the ban be on?
It is on, it is on as of now.
Okay.
Three to two. It may come off sooner than two weeks. Item twenty-one.
Make a motion with adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.